Nobody on the line?
Just Millie.
Millie?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Jim, who'd you say was on vacation?
I thought that Millie said she'd be on vacation.
Yeah, she's on my line.
Oh, good.
Yeah. I guess we'll do roll call then.
Julie McDonald?
Out here.
Hannah Bezzanat?
Here.
Jim C.
Here.
Noah Schoenover.
Yeah.
Mike Capnet.
Here.
Chanel McKinley.
Yeah, too, Rod.
Timothy O'Connor.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Vote to adopt Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? Okay. So we vote to adopt the consent agenda then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repose?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on. Open for comment from the public. Marcus.
All right, good evening, thank you very much. My name's Mark Shear, I run the Seabroke Kelp Farm up in Doyle Bay and in that operation. Came here just for really two reasons. One is to, is to let you know that we have a second site, which I think you're aware of, that's in the public comment period. That public comment period started yesterday. And, and I'm going to take it an opportunity to talk to you and see if you had any questions about it. Any more suggestions or ideas. Certainly, I would welcome the council's support to, to that during the public comment period or any individual's support for that. And then, and then also just to give you an update of what we're doing down there. Dr. Stevens came in, I think it was a week, a month ago and talked before, but I'll give you an update of what we're doing. We put in about 25 miles of kelp seed this, this last fall. We had three species in there, one more species than we had last year. The goal is, hopefully, we'll produce somewhere around, you know, half a million pounds of kelp this year. So a significant increase over last year. We're going to process that majority of that locally here and some will catch a can. And we've moved that product into a variety of different markets. We're really encouraged by what the market's coming back and, and hoping that we can, we can expand that production pretty quickly in the coming years. So, you know, if there are any questions anybody has about what we're doing. If Mike came down and was able to come and see the, see the farm and see our operation, thank you very much for doing that. Really useful. So yeah, any, any questions that anybody has, please, you know, let me know.
The second site is the one that we've already commented, commented on?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're for that, so.
Excellent.
We've already made our comments, I believe, so. To the state anyway.
Right, during the initial round, this is, that was the agency review. And they consider us an agency because of municipality. This is the public review and their preliminary decision to approve the lease. And it creates another public comment period, and so I'm likely to reaffirm our past comments.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, so one, that was the agency review comment period, the public comment. So they vote, the state is determined that they think it would be in the interest of the state to issue the lease, and that's what the preliminary decision says. And that decision will go public comment for 30 days. And then at the end of that, they'll, and address those, if there are concerns, we'll address them. My goal is, I want to be, if there are concerns, I'd rather learn about it now and try to address it during the public comment period than wait till the end of it and try to figure it out after that. I mean, you know, I think this is something that needs to be part of the community. That's what we're trying to achieve and we want, we want to be, we want to be a good part of the community. So it's important to have that dialogue and have the opportunity to talk about any concerns that people have or not. I, you know, I think it's a good site. I think it's a, I think that it will, when developed, and we may get it seeded out this fall, it would, could potentially triple our production in any year. So.
I would think our main concern was the lights, as long as that's there for mariners, that's the main thing. It's, other than that, it was great time.
What I expect to happen, and what happened in Doyle Bay, is part of the application process, the lease is only one part. Then there's an operating permit, and then we've got to go to the core engineers and get permission to put anything in the water. Part of the core project is they, they require, there's a National Marine Fisheries Review comment that will happen. They've already kind of given, given us some indication of what they're going to go in the comments in this, in the agency review. And then we've got to take, once we resolve what we can put into the water, then we take and we file another application with Coast Guard, which, and then they will define for us what, what navigation requirements. And Doyle Bay, they didn't require us to put anything in there, but they put it on the chart. So if you see, you see it in there in the chart. I expect that we're going to have navigation light and, and signal requirements, you know, from the Coast Guard in this. Because it is a transit zone, even though there's a half a mile transit corridor south of the site. I still expect that we're going to have to put, we're going to have to put corner posts with, you know, radar reflectors and, and lights and things like that.
There's, there are so many people that use that at night in the winter time, the divers are going, they don't come until like eight, nine o'clock lots of nights. By the time they, well, that's when they're in here, but that's another hour, hour and a half out, so it's plenty dark.
My expectation is, you know, not only will it be on the chart, we'll, we'll have to put radar and reflectors and lights on the, on the corner posts and the raised. Any other, any other questions or concerns?
Yes, Mike.
Just so the council does know, I have started working for Marcus, just as a temporary employee, so. Any comments I have, I'll still be independent, but I do want to make everybody aware that I've worked out there a few days and just when they need an extra hand, I'm out there sometimes.
Thanks, thanks, Mike.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you for your support, I really do appreciate it, and that there's a future ship that's looking bright, so, thanks.
Good. Anyone else? No one on the phone? Except for that person? All right, moving on. Ordinance number 732, change the council meeting time. Do all of them later? All right. Moving on, reports from city officials. Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, there's a report in the package. I will add, though, that the school board, the school district superintendent contacted me recently and would like to arrange for the annual workshop between the city council and the school board to that, so that the district can discuss the financial for the coming year for school funding. Superintendent would like to know if Thursday, excuse me, Wednesday, March 3rd is at 6:00 PM is a workable time for the council to meet with the, with the school board.
That works for me.
It's Wednesday, March 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
John, this is Millie.
Yes, Millie.
I arrived home on the ferry that night, so I probably won't make it.
All right, thank you for letting us know.
I'm not sure if I'll be back then either.
We get it next.
Oh, March 3rd?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'll be here then, never mind, duh.
Okay, great.
Will you email us if that's definite?
I will.
Okay.
Check with the superintendent tomorrow, but at this point, it's, it's, it's good with them, I know that. It's a workable day for the, for the school.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to attend, so just let me know.
Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Put me down to you, gentlemen. Am I on the list?
The list, for the.
School.
Reminder? Okay.
I just have a couple of comments if I can at this point. Very happy to be, John notified us that the governor put us in his budget for 8.3 million on the infrastructure for that downtown project. That's huge.
Yeah.
If the city grid has to spend 4 million to match 28.3 million, it's a no-brainer.
It is an opportunity for us.
Yes.
Mike, sorry.
Well, commenting on that, I think that's terrific as well. I did, I have heard some feedback, there's still some, some resistance, so I think that that clearly is something that can help us. And, you know, having really good, which I know John has worked on this with the reports that he's, he's worked on. But just, you know, enlightening the public into how we can pay for this and, you know, the way we anticipated working out and, you know, little with any risk really to, you know, day-to-day taxpayers here. I think that's going to be pretty important, we need to make sure we can articulate that really well. And related to that, you know, I mentioned this a while ago, but the Dowman Fund passed $15 million here this, this last few weeks. It's a remarkable achievement for such a small community that we've had the, you know, the long-term foresight of the past to initiate that and then the discipline to, you know, manage it really well. I think that that's a, that's a remarkable statement for a small community like this.
I agree with that statement.
And then the last thing is, I, I can maybe, tomorrow I might come in and visit with you, I'd be interested in learning more about the project position.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? You got anything else, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Treasure?
Mr. Mayor, I've submitted a report. I'm, to try to think before you call my name, I'm not sure if I've put it in there. But it is time for budget time, so I'm needing to do, budget committee this year. I'm not sure if I should have scheduled on there the dates, but if not, I'll get that to you guys. I just hope I'm in your ear of who would like to be a part of that this year, and I really appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Aquatic manager.
Mr. Mayor, I submitted a written report and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've heard around, around town, a lot of people excited about the pool and things going on, just, just conversationally, hearing people talk about it and stuff.
Saturdays are psychotic.
Yeah, that's.
They're absolutely psychotic. The last, the first, the first Saturday I said put in there, we had 80 people. Last Saturday, we had close to 90, and I had to tell a couple of people, okay, we're going to have to chill a little bit and wait to come in because it's just so many kids.
Yeah.
And it's turned into, I mean, as much as I want, like, as families and whatnot, you know, a lot of people are just dropping kids and going. And so it is absolute pandemonium right now, so we're, we're all looking forward to the end of February. So, I mean, the rest of the week's nice and quiet, but Thursdays are actually starting to kick off too with the family.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, Saturdays right now are just pandemonium.
Whose idea was that pre-Saturday?
That was John.
Oh, I was trying to blame you.
Well, that is, that is on these days also, he can come and help you.
Yeah, no, we've been doing it with three guards, like, I've been doing it and we've had, so there's two guards always on the deck and then there's me running in between. This weekend, since basketball games got canceled and they were in town anyways, and next weekend we'll have four guards, so three guards, because there actually has to be a guard standing at the pool right now because that's just how crazy it is.
I've been participating by Zoom.
And I don't even have that many adults like screaming about the fact that if they want to go to the fitness room or in the hot tub, that they actually have to pay for it, you know? The few people that are doing it are, have no problems doing it, so. Only been yelled at by one person, so I'm considering that a win. And that wasn't even having to do with the bees or anything, she was mad because somebody could bring their cell phone out and take pictures of their kids on the deck.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts on extending your hours on Saturdays?
Well, there's thoughts of it, but if, if I extend my hours, then we're going to lose rental times. And that's the only day that you can rent a big toy, when the big toy opens back up, so. And until I get a couple of more 18-year-olds, we're going to be kind of, we're, we're kind of limited to what we can do because they can only work till a certain time, so. And, yeah, though, I, I have me and I have Louis, I have, I do have one other 18-year-old, but as much as I love her, she is not suitable to be able to be left on her own up there. She is just, I, I, I love her to death, she's just not mature enough for it.
Yeah. Any more questions for Jessica? Okay, moving on. City clerk.
Well, we had President's Day, Matt came and, came and ran to have a submitted report. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And it looks like the next Craig City Council meeting, first Thursday of the month, would be March 4th.
The way this year's going, that's tomorrow, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
Okay. City planner.
I submitted a written report and would be happy to answer any questions.
Where you been?
Lucky I'm here tonight.
All right. Go ahead, Mike.
So I, I know I've asked this real well, but I did, I was asked this week, and I do have a question myself. So the city, or excuse me, the state, you know, not declaring or continuing this COVID declaration they had, does that have any influence or impact on the city or how does, how does that work?
It does not have an impact on actions that the city can take. It potentially has some impact on availability of funding and logistics, resources, supplies and such from the state. But we don't rely heavily on those, so there's no immediate impact that's noted. We have an advantage here that most of the vaccinations are taking place through their IHS applying vaccine through, I think distributed through the health company. So we don't have some of the impacts that other places have, they're using other lower-level providers that do vaccines using state vaccine. So right now, the effects are minimal, more than anything without the disaster declaration in place. It increases the threat level because the state has all of the travel restrictions and everything the state has been using to control the spread of COVID somewhat are, have changed now from health orders to advisories. And those can't, there's no function of law that those can be put into place without legislature passing some other laws. So that right now is the biggest effect. I don't know if there will be some effect long-term to testing supplies and vaccine and personal protective equipment. I hope not, like I said, in the short term, we don't have a big reliance on those things from the state. So here locally, I don't expect to see a lot of impact there.
Brian, can you refresh me on what the city ordinance or rules are on the sale of property and right-of-ways being granted so we don't have landlocked property?
Right now, the municipal code requires that at the time of sale, the access is provided in our subdivision code.
Okay. Is that being addressed on a recent sale of property?
I contacted them, they have not addressed it anyway, if you're talking about the Highway Lodge and the Craig Tribal Association. I did contact Anna twice regarding the issue, and she was elevating it, but I have not heard anything back from the tribe in regards as to how they plan to resolve it.
Okay. They have a building permit at this time and are currently remodeling or? There's a lot of activity down there.
Yeah, they are. They are remodeling, they're using the grant money that they got for COVID to make COVID rooms. And then they're going to switch, then some office spaces, apparently.
I'd have to check to see if there's, I know they've got a couple of open building permits, but I don't remember if one's been issued for down there or if all of the building permits pertain to track 18. I'd have to check my files to see if there's an open permit for the right-of-way.
Okay, I'd like to see something addressed on this right-of-way issue if we still haven't gotten an answer back.
Then make a formal request.
Okay. Good. Whenever you get back from where you've been. Thank you, Brian. Fire EMS coordinator. Mindy, you on the phone? She must have forgotten where I don't mean.
Something must have come up, I reminded her about this morning, I can only assume that there's no call, something else kind of must have interrupted.
Had a written report, so.
When the doctor comes to visit, I would, if it was an opportunity, I would love to meet with her, yeah.
Yeah, she hasn't given us a solid date yet.
Yeah.
We're still, she's still trying to put together her ALS requirements.
Okay.
And she's working on it, so I do know we've moved forward quite a ways on that, and she was, is expecting to pick it up pretty soon.
Or maybe just, when we know she's come in, just email the city council and if it works out, I know it's a tight schedule when they visit, but if it works out.
Just keep reminding me, and I'll try to tell them after any.
Between our two memories, maybe one of us will get it.
Maybe.
I know she wants to fish while she's here, so if she.
Julie can take her fishing, she has that big red boat.
Yeah, she comes.
I mean, I don't know if I'll bring her around. That's more boat than I can operate.
We are. Okay. Arbor master.
Mr. Mayor, I failed to submit a written, written report. Just a quick rundown of things we've been working on this last month. We've got the, the boardwalk there in front of Ruth Bams, pressure washed, cleaned up, it's not, it's not slippery anymore. We're working on a project in the boatyard. We're going to be installing streetlights in the boatyard, and we're using surplus light fixtures from the city. And so it's only going to cost, and we're making our own tenant mounts to, to mount the lights to the light poles, so it should only cost $200, $300 by the time we're all done. So, um, should only cost two, $300 by the time we're all done. And we should have four lights, um, that'll be on a photo eye. Turn on, turn on at dark and turn off at light, um, in the boatyard. And we hope that will help. It's not horrible, but there have been things that go missing there from time to time. So, um, that should help with that. Been working on budget items or getting next year's budget planning going. We continue to work on pedestal, power pedestals in North Cove and South Cove. And we're also dealing with some derelict vessels at this time. Some of them are stuff that's getting impounded. Some of it's disposal of impounded vessels. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
You're gonna use LED fixtures out there on those light poles?
What, what they are is they're old, um, high pressure sodium fixtures that we are converting to LED fixtures. It's like what we did in South Cove. Those, those fixtures never changed, but we converted them to run a LED bulb.
Good. Did you find out anything on your water problem?
We sure did. Um, the numbers are just skewed. I, are the worst. I tallied up all of ours, our usage. Um, August is our heaviest month with the, all the saners in and stuff. This year we had the saners and the trollers in about the same time. And that month we went through about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand gallons, um, of water. That was our, our largest consumption.
Why does the meter say different?
We think that, uh, in the transfer of the, of the, uh, meter reading data over to the county system, the consumption amount is being overstated by a factor of ten. That appears to be happening.
Something's going on there. It ain't good. It's still declared through December and January of this year.
Right, yeah. It goes back actually to the end of last summer.
Yes. It doesn't make sense because the previous four years does not show that. None of this is making sense, and I'm aware of that.
If, if we were using that much water, the last would have come down itself, turned the water off.
Well, I would expect somebody to shut it off.
Yeah, we weren't using that much. We, like I said, we, we log it every day. And we keep track, you know, we can, we'll notice a little spike and.
I think was at the month of October, August one was sixty-six.
It was six hundred and sixty thousand.
Sixty-six thousand gallons.
Yeah.
And divide all those months by ten, then the numbers come back within the normal range.
Okay.
And, uh, at this point, Russell and Hans and I made yesterday after you pointed it out. That's, and it's that particular account. I mean, my house, the account of my house isn't overstated by a factor of ten. Nobody else does. So, uh, something of that particular, that particular account is just goofy. We'll have to figure out what the, what the problem is. I think it's on the county system, Adam, but I haven't had a chance to look it together and talk shop and share it about it to try to figure out where the miscalculation is.
Obviously, we're gonna have to use some forensics on it to figure it out. So, yeah. That scared the hell out of me. Bad. Well. Cause you look at South Cove and there's nothing like that. Why does it happen in North Cove? There's two different entities reading each side of the road, for one thing. And, uh, is it their meter? Is it, uh, something to do with the county? And I don't know. But hopefully we find out.
Russell and I compared numbers of the, the meter reading numbers and those were, those were accurate. It, it is on the county side of things, whether it's how they're, you know, I don't know. But the, the meter readings do get read every single day and we have years of that, um, you know, on file.
Make sure you send the county the thank you note. Okay, thanks. You got anything else, Holmes?
No.
Anything else you did? Library?
Well, Angela, she, are you on the phone, Angela? She was scheduled to have the day off, so she.
Yeah. She has submitted a written report and pretty thorough one. I'm glad to see that she's working and helping Quoak out with their head start thing.
Yeah.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've seen her weekly, um, book read on Facebook.
They're really cute.
They're very well done.
Yeah. Yeah.
Angela or Brenna.
What's your website? How do they get?
They do have a Facebook.
Well, Facebook?
She's been doing it for a long time.
Yes.
I don't look at Facebook very much.
Yeah.
Leastens I can get away with.
And then the, the Craig Head Start already has a virtual reading Zoom that they do. Is the reason. I'm sure she would have been willing to do Craig as well, but.
She might go as far as skin your citizen.
Maybe too.
Maybe. That'd be nice. All right. Police chief? He's out wounded.
Yeah, he's recovering from surgery.
We can hear you.
Yeah, I, I did not get a report in, um, I'm recovering from knee surgery, but I did get released back to light duty. So I've been getting cut up on a lot of administrative stuff. Just to add a couple of things, uh, Detective Brown quit. He's no longer with the agency. With any luck, uh, position will be filled tomorrow. Just waiting for one test result to come back. Officer Dustin Conley has completed the research academy. He is back in Craig. Uh, he came out, I think in the top four percent of his class. Uh, this coming weekend, uh, Officer Josh Conley will leave for the full academy. That was gonna be a little over four months long. So I will be down, uh, one guy while he's doing that. The digital fingerprinting system, uh, the cross match, uh, that we were having issues with, uh, doesn't that, uh, correct? And everything is working good. Finally, I guess the tech guy is up in Anchorage to, to listen to reason. Uh, we do have a new network printer. Got that set up and, uh, working. Uh, I've been working with Quoak TD, obtaining, uh, new LMR radios to help, uh, better, uh, radio communications, uh, with their fire EMS and police over there. Everything has been done. Uh, they've ordered the equipment, uh, all the sharing agreements that needs to be done to make the other state happy have been completed. We just gotta wait for them to get, uh, their hardware and, and we'll be able to run it on that. The kiosks for DMV, yeah, I got those, um, working as well. So we're, uh, we've been doing, uh, all the written tests again. So that's making people, uh, fairly happy. By the way, I did a quick look at the numbers, uh, the calls for service for Craig, uh, jumped up about a hundred from, uh, December. Quoak was up a little bit. Uh, ASP was up a little bit too, but not too bad. But, um, as far as the jail mandates, uh, January of this year and, um, being that we've held so many people due to overcrowdedness, uh, in the, the state contract facilities, not wanting to take in rates if, uh, the contract jails can hold them. So they'll look really good, uh, when it comes to organizing to, uh, legislate, um, possibly getting some more funding for the contract jail. But, uh, uh, we definitely have spent a lot of food, you know, for the stay inmates. But, uh, uh, otherwise, uh, yeah, just get kind of a whole bunch of that mixed up. And with any luck, uh, three or four weeks, uh, they might sign me out for full duty and I'll, I'll be back in uniform. I guess if there's any questions, I'll be, I'll be answering.
Good deal. Get better soon, Arden.
Uh, thanks.
Thanks, Arden. Moving on to public works.
Met a report as required. Be happy to answer the questions.
Any questions? Russell?
That's the next one. I'm sorry.
They have two bags to solve up the piece now?
They got more than that.
Perfect. They learned to use a scoop on their own?
I hope they can.
I hope so. I asked for two. Thank you, Russell. Recreation?
I did submit a report and I have a little to add. We started volleyball and I'm so happy. Everyone, we had sixteen people show up on Tuesday. Uh, it just opened, uh, two minutes ago. I have Samantha over there signing everyone in and Jose's taking care of it. It's worked out really well. Um, I haven't had over, an over amount of whining. Uh, everyone is so happy to be back and be able to play. We opened up skating too last week and, uh, didn't skate as long as they did cool and a few other things. But it was really good to have it open and we switched it up to Saturday, uh, and that seems to be working. It'll be a more family friendly day because Fridays were kind of like, let's get up, let's go view some scenes. And you know, and it's gonna be exhausting. And we switched up our after school skating to Monday and Wednesday, which will accommodate, uh, not only the, uh, the potential ballet class that Julie is considering doing, because she was thinking of Tuesday or Thursday afternoon. But we'll also make it easier for the kids that are on swim team and the ones that are doing karate. So that not everything is all on the same day we're spreading out. So there's more to do. And I have been meeting a lot with, uh, the people on the Centennial Committee and talking to people around town about getting ideas for the great celebration that we're gonna have in one year out, um, March first, 2022. And we've got some great ideas. Karen Head, Kathy Peavy, Katrina Peavy, uh, Lauren Mackey, uh, and Samantha Wilson and I are, are the people on the committee with Cheryl Fecho and Ralph Mackey as a consultant. And that's, and that's gonna be really a lot of fun. And I just got a new sanitizer in and that was, uh, the mayor's idea. If you get a sanitizer for the gym, just got it in, gonna go open it up and spray everything now. I'm pretty excited about that. I was so excited for my budget meeting. I was a week early. I'm a recovery procrastinator and I just got a little carried away on that one, but I will be there next week too. Uh, and Samantha unfortunately has got a job with the Forest Service in, um, Thursday and she will start back, uh, for them in mid-April. So I'll have to figure out what to do then. And she's been just a joy to work with. The kids really like her and she has so much science background and craft and art. And it's been, it's been really fun. So. So that's a preview of coming attractions. Any questions, suggestions? Anyone wanna volunteer for the Centennial?
You're getting close to that, aren't you, Dan?
Is the gym rentable now?
Uh, we have, not really. Not yet. Not that I know. We have, we haven't been doing rentals. Uh, if the cases stay low like they are and the variant doesn't pop over here. Unfortunately, Ketchikan had ten cases today. So that's concerning.
Happened there.
We're holding our own. We're doing really well. And again, thanks to, uh, Alicia Roberts, who looks fabulous job of the, uh, getting out the vaccinations. Any other questions?
Just a little fact. There's, it hasn't been any cases coming from the bar. So I feel like the gym is kind of next step. Just saying.
How many kids you got in the ballet plan?
I am still, I'm still putting together what I'm gonna do. I'm trying to not overcommit myself.
Hans said he volunteers to thought about that big, so.
Oh, you wanna teach him?
He's got a tutu.
All right. Well, it's, it's part of the official record.
I can make him one. I'll do a five, so it'll look like a kiln.
You can take that girl with you. It'll work.
I just want to have a Kirk's doggy.
A platy, that'd be nice. Sounds good. Okay. Any questions for Victoria?
Uh, just with the village, Katrina Peavy and, you know, cleanup thing. She coordinated, Kathy and all the other people who donated the Thomas electric. You know, it's just, it's nice to see people put that effort in for, you know, better community.
Yes, it is. Good thing. Parks and public facilities. Doug? They did put in a report. What's he doing up oil soaked sodas? John, do you know? Are you aware?
He told me what it was and I don't remember any details of the explanation. I have to confess inside.
Came from the oil spill.
I know where it comes from. I was just thinking we could use it for a fire starter for disposing of some of your boats.
I don't know what D E C, I, I wasn't involved. Russell was involved with that. So that would be a good.
No, we can't do that.
A question, it would be, I think Doug, Doug's kind of his wheelhouse. And I have heard, you know, a number of people who walk trails, uh, acknowledge the improvements and they appreciate it. With all the unfortunate trees that blown down there and we're keeping down cleaning that up, it's still left a lot of, you know, residual stuff there. Yeah, and I would even acknowledge this. I mean, it was nice to watch the trail. It was relatively somewhat natural pristine and with so much new cut there now, it just has a different appearance. Is it, I know it's a lot of work, but is it possible to, and I've, you know, I've heard this from others too, maybe try to minimize or get rid of some of that stuff?
The rounds.
The rounds and, yeah, it's, I, I know it's a lot, but there is an appearance thing in walking the trail when it's, you know, at least close to the natural.
Okay, I'll bring it up with, uh, with, uh, the documents. You can get it scheduled.
Well, yeah, it's kind of what I'm asking, but it's, it's also a lot. I, I know that would be a fair amount of work. I have an idea. Maybe I can stop by and move this up.
Sure.
We were concerned about getting it safe and then.
Oh, no, I'm not complaining at all. People were, people were appreciative to both the work on a trail and getting it working back up on the lights.
Yeah, then we'll work on cleaning it up now, though. But you got the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was aware of that. I saw, I thought they were moving logs out of there already somewhat. So I don't know.
Yeah.
But out there.
I was just asked if it was, if that was the intent or if it could possibly happen to some degree. But overall, people are really pleased. Hey, the trail got, you know, has that improved much and, uh, you know, it's opened back up relatively quickly.
Yeah. Now Doug did have me make a couple of those logs long, so they were gonna try to get them out and mill them. So.
Okay.
Cause they do use them. All right. Any more questions for Doug? And we'll be moving on to reading the correspondence. If anything under John you wanna touch on?
Uh, I don't think so. Uh, it can also kind of speak for itself, but if there are questions, I'd try to respond.
No questions, Campbell? Consideration of resolutions and ordinances. Ordinance number three seventy-two, change of council meeting times. Open for discussion.
I would move to adopt ordinance seven thirty-two at second reading.
Motion been made and segmented to adopt, uh, seven thirty-two, the change of city council meeting times. Is there any further discussion? None? All in favor of adopting that ordinance seven thirty-two?
It's a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, is it? Sorry, sorry.
Hannah Bassinat?
Yes.
Millie's getting over?
Well, um, Millie texted me. I, I texted her just to check if she was on mute. And she's got three games to her. She said, I, I thought I hadn't give up. So she's not online.
And Mike Cadment?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jim Se?
Yes.
Okay, motion stopped. City ordinance seven thirty-three, designating the city council seats.
Adopt ordinance number seven thirty-three at second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance seven thirty-three at the second reading, designating city council seats.
Can I ask a question? So there was pluses and minuses. I don't really have a strong opinion on this, to be honest with you. But there were pluses and minuses on both sides, cause what, what's the, what's the upside and downside of doing this? Does anybody agree?
Well, the upside is that you can run against a certain person instead of whoever's on the council. If you are running or somebody else, like say you and me were running against each other, you know, or, and somebody else wanted to run and they liked your opinions better than mine, so they wanted to run against me and not you. And so that way, um, you too would be on the council instead of me and her possibly, or him, you know, because, um, we, I got more votes than you did when she was trying to, or they were trying to get me out of the seat, you know what I mean? Where that would be, you could run against a certain person where you don't believe in what they want to run, that, what their opinions are, you know what I mean?
In the past, we haven't had a lot of, we've had a lot of votes that were, that they didn't get. They, they would still only pick one, two.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's supposed to be pick two and everybody's still picking one.
No, I've noticed that.
Yeah, and, um, just the.
So you think it'd be clearer for the people voting?
Absolutely.
And clear for the people running as well?
Yeah.
Because they would know who their opponent was.
When Millie was running, there was a lot of people that thought she was running against me and I'm like, no, we, we have two, oh, we have two openings. We need her to run because we have two openings. You feel like it's clear? Cause somebody was laying out like the upsides and the downsides, but I, I couldn't remember the downside. There was some, a downside brought up, but I don't remember what it was.
Some people like the idea of it being open. I've pushed for this for sixteen years, so.
And why did people not want to do it?
Cause they liked the way they were doing it, I guess.
Just a resistance to change?
Yeah.
John, do you have any insight?
No.
Okay.
Shannon, do you roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Hannah Bazzanet?
Yes.
Millie Skidover? Mike Cabinet?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jim Se?
Yes.
Thank you.
And order, yeah, it's adopted. And resolution twenty-one oh four, establishing council or capital project for two thousand twenty-one.
Do it out.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh four. Establishing capital projects for two thousand twenty-one. See discussion on this. Anyone feel we need to change the order or just go like it is?
I thought it was.
And I, well, on number three, and I don't know if it really matters, but I thought there was gonna be, we were discussing the possibility of having the fire hall EMS and then possibly incorporating the, the police station as well.
I thought we were gonna do that due to some type of insurance or like the insurance would go up or something. Was that, is that just me making it up or is there something like that? I feel like if we combined, I thought we were talking about when we, if we combine the fire hall, the EMS and the jail, then we'd be in a different bracket or have to follow different rules or something. Is that a thing?
I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact details of that. I know we had a discussion about it. Some things to keep in mind is the design for the bar hall is in the door arrangement though. And if council were to elect to combine that building with the new jail police station, then we'd be going back to the drawing board. Wouldn't be able to take advantage of, and it's, it's a bit speculative, but we're expecting Congress to adopt a infrastructure bill in the second calendar quarter of this year. Scuttlebutt is they want shovel ready projects, projects that are committed as design cited, uh, which the fire hall is. If we were to combine these buildings to make one large building, we wouldn't be eligible for any sort of potential capital dollars to protect the fire hall this year.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you can't do it, or it doesn't mean it's not a good idea. It's just be in position for, uh, for the construction dollars is, is kind of a consideration here. And I, honestly, I do have some concerns about fire hall EMS building being combined with the jail and police station and whatever else, because ever getting, we're already getting into a more complicated building. It's never far off. Heating systems and more complex ventilation, air conditioning, much bigger site. It's just, it brings some complications. I understand the efficiency though, to some extent, but functionally, fire EMS building doesn't need to be attached to the police station.
I, I agree. I just, I was under the impression that there were some additional grant opportunities or, or maybe not grants, not the right word, but funding opportunities. If you have what's called a, um,
Public safety building.
A public safety building, which needed to incorporate the police station.
One of the things we have been talking about, if you remember, is, uh, building a building for the Craig Police Department, the troopers and possibly the court.
Yeah.
So that would end up, uh, hitting some of those requirements.
Gotcha.
But we're not ready for that, yeah, unfortunately.
Okay.
But we are looking into it. But at this point, like John says, it's not a shell ready project, which we need to have one in case this does happen in the second quarter.
Gotcha. No, I don't have a strong opinion on the matter. I just wanted to clarify.
Any more questions on this? Okay, just another roll call, please?
If there's no more discussion.
No more discussion?
Nope.
Okay.
Hannah Bazzanet?
Yes.
Mike Cabinet?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jim Se?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-one dash oh five, adopting powcat transportation priorities for two thousand twenty-one.
I'll move to approve city upgrade resolution twenty-one dash oh five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh five, adopting the powcat transportation priorities for two thousand twenty-one. Any discussion on this? No? Will call for a roll call, won't ma'am, please?
Hannah Bazzanet?
Yes.
Mike Cabinet?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jim Se?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-one dash oh six, support for Senate Bill seventy-four in the state, Alaska State Legislature.
Two, let's see. To adopt, uh, resolution twenty-one, first, uh, support for Senate Bill seventy-four.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh six, support for Senate Bill seventy-four. Any discussion on this?
We just, we need, we don't make much doing some of this stuff, uh, relation stuff. I think it's really important. Strong likelihood we're gonna see, you know, increase the activity in the agriculture industry here, um, as well as, you know, the long term, the long term economic, uh, basis of community of Craig has always been centered around the rural environment. You know, we've had other things that have come and went, uh, and it's always welcome, but by and large, Craig is a green community and needing to maintain infrastructure here that, uh, gives us the, the ability to continue to move forward in that area. It's, it's vitally important to the economic well-being of our community.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
No, we'll add that. I did notice that there's a, a several million dollar appropriation in the same bill for the Coac Airport. Although I haven't been able to get a hold of DOT, I had to find out exactly what they have in mind, but that's another incentive for adoption of the bill.
To pursue this, yeah. How much, do you, was there a dollar amount, you say, or?
There was, and I want to say it was three million dollars, but it's a rough order of magnitude.
Would it be possible to reinforce that neighborhood for accepting cargo jets?
I intend to find out what they have in mind for it.
Yeah, I know that's something that they had on the radar, but I don't know where it went, so. Interesting. Okay, is there any more discussion on this? You just want to go a bit, huh?
Absolutely.
I knew it. Roll call, please.
Hannah Bazzanet?
Yes.
Mike Cabinet?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Jim Se?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion's been adopted. Okay. Moving on, new business. Consider approval of bond council agreement?
There's a memorandum packet in the draft engagement letter from law firm of K and L Gates. Described in the memorandum of the function and need for a bond council. With, uh, an eye toward, um, financing the downtown harbor project. Uh, giving the council a little bit of context about, uh, what the fee amount means relative to other, other similar sized bond projects. And I'm satisfied after doing a little bit of research and talking to staff at the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank that the, the estimated fee is, uh, is within what's typically, uh, what is typical for this kind of service on this size of a bond issue, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have regarding the engagement letter.
Any questions, Mr. Guys?
Is this something that the attorney needs to review, the city attorney, or?
He did review it, yes.
Oh, he did, okay.
I sent it to him.
All right, that, cause, yeah, some of this would go.
Yeah, it's like I read through it.
I, yeah, so that I'm like, okay. So I'm glad, I'm glad we have him as a resource.
Yeah.
From the Senate, from my standpoint, is there's no cost, there's no bond issue.
Yeah.
Did we get it on the floor yet?
Oh, yeah, it did.
Moved to approve by motion being attached in case of a letter between the city of Craig and K and L Gates, LLP.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve this agreement. Yeah. K and L Gates Firm, anyway. Is it all in favor or you guys want to discuss it more?
That was my only question.
Mike, you see anything or? This a roll call, John, or?
Voice load on, or straight motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion approved. Consider utility connections at ATS seven eighty-eight?
Mr. Mayor, this does require a little bit of history lesson. I tried to provide a page and half memo. Also attaches the gardener's letter, uh, and some minutes from a council decision made in May of nineteen ninety-two. My recommendation's on page two of the memo. Uh, if there are questions or, uh, comments, I'm ready to respond.
I have a question. I, I don't disagree with, uh, what your recommendation is. My question is, is how many parking spaces along the road are we going to give them an entrance and an exit? Or one, and one with, for them to get in and out of that lot? Or do they have to apply to the state for that? Because it's just entry onto the state highway.
It does border on the state highway. I know Hans has been on, on site with the gardeners.
I can, happy to, happy to talk about that. Um, I expla, I explained to them if, if they were just to maintain the, the one entrance, that it would be fine with us if they exited, um, into the harbor parking lot because there is plenty of room to, um, for through traffic to go through there on that end. And that way we wouldn't lose, uh, cause we have probably six, maybe seven parking spaces along the highway there. It is, I'm sure it's, uh, highway right of way. Um, and they probably, if they, if they wanted to, they could probably, push that, but it makes more sense for them. It makes more sense for us to just simply let them exit into our parking lot and come around through, you know, the, the parking and, and go around the dumpsters and, and exit out that way. It doesn't affect any, we wouldn't lose any parking places that way.
As long as we put a stop sign there so that they have to stop, so that people that are, those people aren't going to be aware of that extra traffic for a long time. So they need to have a stop sign there so that they don't just get to get their coffee and come zooming into that thing and I back up and they run into me or me back up and run into them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that, and there's gonna need to be stop signs in both ways technically.
The, the way they were planning it is they'd, they'd use the existing entrance, um, cause usually the coffee shop to you, the drivers, the side that goes to the coffee stand. So they'd come in that way and, um, and just exit straight through. And then we would, in the summertime, we could maintain as many spots as possible in that lot if we still decide, if there, if that's still available to lease.
So they're gonna, they're gonna put it very up close, so we might still be able to use some of that lot.
Yes, it'll be up against that, that, the highway right of way is where the stand will be. And so we won't really lose a whole lot of parking space in that lot if we, if the, if we're allowed to continue to lease that, lot for extended parking in the summertime.
Okay, that's a plus.
Wouldn't we be better off to move that entrance over to the far side of that, right side of that lot? And, or would we be better off where it's at, so they can have that through traffic like you're talking about and still retain our parking capabilities in the back?
I, for myself, I think it's the easiest thing is just to, just to have them put it in close to.
Where it's at?
Where it's, where it's at, yeah.
The existing site.
An existing site, yeah. It'd be the side closest to South Cove, you know, if you, if you're pulling into South Cove, you generally, um, head point, park facing north there, right on the side of the highway, it would be up against that on that lot.
But he's, he's saying if they shifted it down just to here, then you'd be having the, the entrance right against where Rusty's property was instead of in the middle of the lot. Which, because you're gonna lose those parking spaces there anyway.
If it's, uh, it's a little bit farther deeper on the property than if you have a line of cars waiting to get coffee, it's not gonna be spilling out onto the.
Everybody.
Or I would. Or the harbor. Yeah.
Another thing I would like to look into is possibly seeing if Rusty's heir would sell us. Another thing I would like to look into is possibly seeing if Rusty's heir would sell us that piece that they've just got all the junk parked on there. So we could use that for parking. Additional parking.
I don't think it's a very big spot.
No, I don't either, but.
I've looked at some of the property markers uh on the end of past lot there. Not a whole lot there when you, with the, with the road that goes down.
Yeah, is there two percent, for two or three vehicles, or maybe, yeah.
With a lot of improvement.
Yeah.
You'd have to do a lot of work like that.
Two or three vehicles there now?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. They don't live much.
No, the ones that up on that one for many years.
Don't we have an ordinance against that?
Yep. Technically, we do.
I know we do. Vehicles aren't supposed to be left there like that, parked that long. Anyway, we'll dodge that one. So uh. Considering the utility connection. At EMS.
So we would, uh, we're gonna put in the water and the sewer to that lot. And put in the pump also, and then once he gets it, his, the maintenance job goes to him, right? Do we know what it's gonna cost to put it?
This, this, this just pertains to the sewer connection. Uh, I think Russell can fill some of the details, but I think there's already water just about near the property line.
Oh.
Is that right, Russell?
Yeah, as far as our records indicate, there's already water stuffed out and sewer there. The issue with the sewer is, is it's only stuffed out to. Ends of the right-of-way on North Hamilton. So we would have to. Either us or have a contract to come in, because you got a big valley between North Hamilton and. Uh Mr. Gardner's property there, so you're gonna have to do quite a bit of work to. To install that and then of course put the lift station, uh, you know, on the property line or within the private property.
Well, in other words, it might behoove us to talk to Rusty's heir at this point. Because it would be easier to put it across that property. If we were to buy that property, we could put it across our own property, right? Easier than through that hole?
I looked at the flats with John and it, there's some kind of indication that there's a potential utility right-of-way.
Or it is.
Or something, it's already there.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so, you know, I, I think this issue is we don't have to locate the sewer line as far as depth. And then we're gonna have to do a bunch of fill-in work to cover that line and bring it over into that. Uh lot. And then, then we would put in the lift station. You've got the issue of power, so you gotta run power to that lift station as well. Uh, I've submitted an application to APNT, and I have not heard back from them yet, to saying that. Application just to be able to meet with them on site to discuss. Uh what would be the options to uh provide power uh just to the lift station.
So we consider that our problem too, to pay to put power in there?
If we're gonna, I guess my view of it is if we're gonna. Treat ATS seven eighty-eight the way it treated the other ones. Then that would require us to. Then it would call for us to provide the pump station and hook up, get it operational and then turn it over to the property. That's what we did on.
We did put power in for all those other ones.
Yeah, they all have to have power to operate, so Virginia Demerits, Dale Kane and Bill Place, and the two cabins on Great Hits Property, that's how they were all. Treated.
Okay.
And he has said that we can still continue to use that as parking for summer, or?
He hasn't told me as much, but.
I've talked with him about it. They would hope that they could still lease it to us and.
And we did, Russell did a lot of improvements to that lot, that's made it really valuable.
Very valuable.
Then we can adapt instead of paying half cash for a couple of years. In a mutual agreement.
Good. Should we consider pursuing in some kind of a parking agreement with them over this? At some point, or?
I can certainly ask them when, uh, when they get a hold of tomorrow to follow up on this. Although, apparently Hans is feeling comfortable that that's their intention. For the summer, and it's always been a just, with the exception of the two-year agreement we had where. The, the surfacing, the rock surfacing improvements we made, which has gone year-to-year basis on the highway parking.
I don't wanna irritate them too much, but. We should discuss that, I know, some kind of written agreement with them, or just let it continue the way it's been?
Happy to bring it up. I can do that.
If you think it's a good idea.
We don't know what the total cost is.
Excuse me?
We don't know what the total cost is gonna be.
Russell, can you give us a rough order of?
Just ballpark.
Ballpark?
Are they ballparked, then? So it's a ten there?
That's what I thought.
There's no power to the lot either, since from that.
There's no.
That it costs that much ballpark from that? Is this the same type of? Was it? Okay.
They were gonna be bringing power in anyway to hook up the coffee shop, so. That might be something that could be negotiated.
Yeah, that would be. A plus.
Okay.
Yeah, if they could bring the power into the lot, then we could end up hooking it up from their power source. Cause it's there, it has to be hooked to their power source anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
Request, yeah.
Might have the, that, we might want to discuss that with with them in the sense that they need to submit. An application that through APNT, you know, basically at the same time here, because. We've had no discussion or indication from the gardeners at this point. Uh, so that actually is just solely for power tubing to the rest of.
Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, so it's all for both?
I'm going to approve funds necessary to purchase and install a water waste pump station at ATS seven eighty-eight and turn. Ownership of the pump station over to Mr. Patrick Gardner to operate and maintain.
Motion has been made and seconded to consider the utility connection at ATS seven eighty-eight. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? None? Is there any council comments?
Um, I wanted to make a comment. I don't know if you guys have heard about uh that law or the bill that Biden passed about um commercial fishermen having to wear masks. Twenty-four seven while they're on the boat, like while they're sleeping. And I heard that the um.
Board of associations fighting the law.
Oh, good. I, I know that um some community members have um written letters that they are going to, I know that it wasn't. Like I've read his bill and I know it wasn't his intention to make this, like that the commercial fishermen fall in it, but they have and. Like even while they're sleeping. And I know that a lot of people live on their boats and that. Uh, the coast guards are gonna start enforcing it, so I think that we should.
Good luck.
I was, I was hoping that like maybe the council would have, have our administrator draft a letter as well.
A resolution condemning his resolution?
But at least to reasons why they shouldn't, I mean, even on a boat, you have to be able to, it's loud, you have to be able to see people's lips yelling for help.
I thought it was on public transportation. I didn't realize it.
No, it's on fishing boats, cause the last controller sent out a notice to me just saying, look out, because maybe you can counter this, so.
Gilders got it too. I, I disagree. I think that this. It's probably an oversight of the application of how it was gonna work.
Uh-huh.
And it clearly is not practical. I mean, you know, half the time it's raining, you're in spray, you're gonna be wet. I mean, these things just aren't gonna hold up to that, and so I, I think that's great of you.
Yeah, yeah.
So you wanna write a resolution condemning?
At least John dropped a letter saying that we aren't in support of it, or reasons why that.
Yeah.
At least that's how the council feels.
Yeah, hopefully there's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there is a difference. I can understand having masks on processors where people are in a, in a confined space on ship, uh, I'm not. I wouldn't contest that, but small individual fam- family fishing boats or you're out on deck, generally it's just close family, you're most of the time anyways.
Or you think you're gonna give the COVID to the fair?
Well, I mean, even on your, even your crew, you know what I mean? Most people stay with their boats through an extended period of time, and half the time. Most of the captains don't even allow their, they usually. Anchor out so that their people can't come in, so.
We addressed that when the advent of this COVID thing, we had the captains anchor up offshore until they went through their. Their quarantine period. As Hans was broadcasting it on the radio to make sure that they tried to hear what we were doing, so. They have masks?
We'll prepare something.
Requirement is a little outrageous, so. Any more comments, council?
I have one random thing I was just discussing with Tim and Jim earlier, is it in the next city um newsletter, it might be good to put something out there. I, I was not aware and how prevalent parvo is on the island, maybe just like a notice to owners. To make sure they're up to date on all their vaccinations, cause it is. Our dog got it, got flown to Ketchikan, and apparently it is that, like everybody in Ketchikan knows, it's just rampant on our island. I was not aware of that.
Parvo is very rampant here, and so rabies could be too, and they should be rabies vaccinated and parvo vaccinated.
I don't know if you can tie it into like a spring, like.
Isn't that something to do with?
Spring cleaning and vaccinate your dog.
Years and years ago. For my first ten or fifteen years in Craig or more, uh, Vet came over. Or somebody came over, the state came over and gave rabies vaccinations at the fire hall for years. And, and then they started adding parvo to it, but. We could call an ass to lady in Ketchikan to come over and be prepared to, we would advertise and get her a clinic to. To get people lined up, so it's not the.
Yeah, so I didn't wanna put the, I didn't wanna put the burden on the city, cause that might be something that Paws could take up or whatever, so I didn't wanna put the burden on the city to actually. Get animals vaccinated, but just maybe a, a notice. Um, so people are aware that it's so prevalent.
City newsletter, possibly a newspaper.
Yeah, just, I don't know. I think it'd be good to give like a reminder heads up.
Parvo sometimes purchase kennel cough, is that true?
No, that's the GI. It.
It's different?
It, it's a, yeah, it's different. This is the one where they, they can't keep anything down. It kills puppies.
Right, but when they get their shots, they get a rabies distemper, which is the kennel cough and parvo, meaning it should.
Kennel cough, yeah.
Was your puppy not holding up to parvo?
No, he was seven months when he got it. I did not realize when we got this series, it was an oversight on my part. I had too many balls in the air. He got vaccines. I didn't realize that one was not included in what he got.
There's still lots of times do that, so.
Yeah, it was just, I should have double-checked the shots that he got, and I didn't.
And then were you on trails and stuff, or?
He was at the ball field. He got it from the ball field, not faulting the ball field or the city, but.
Everybody's dogs run out.
Yeah. And it can live in the soil for two years without, unless there's heavy direct sunlight, which. Uh, it can live in the soil for two years. I mean, I tried to tell the people on our street that had dogs, cause our dog, you know, he goes in our yard, then another dog runs it up, and he had it. You know, so I told the owners on our yard and they, all their dogs were vaccinated, so.
This is what I brought up in federal wolf meeting here about, about two, three years ago, was the fact that. Uh, these dogs on the island having parvo, distemper and all these things, did introduce it into the wolf population, just like your pup got it.
Yeah.
It'd be real easy, and then you'd lose the whole population.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was.
Yeah. Anyways, thankfully ours was old, our dog was old enough that he bounced back, but.
Yeah, that's scary.
Quick thing on a carryover from the last meeting. At the next meeting. I, I'd like to discuss how we could go about uh getting the state to tighten their timber regulations. I think that's a very important thing for us to do. They're gonna be the major logging thing, but they do. They don't have any regulations. Well, they have some, but it's no size to their clear cuts, nothing like that, so. They need to step up and do a little bit better job than what they're doing.
Around the cricks especially.
Yeah, no.
Not buffers big enough, you know, piling up all their bark and all that right by the creek?
No.
That's insane.
Right, I'd like to. Discuss that and figure out how we can do something about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Come on, Mike, say something.
Move to adjourn?
Motion has been made to adjourn.